Recording in progress.
All right, so we're good to go.
I should say preserved, he's so old. Instead of reserved, preserved.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. If I could get everyone to please take a seat this morning and join us. As I said, good morning and welcome. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 City Commission Meeting. Today is a wonderful morning, couldn't be better weather. As I've mentioned before on many occasions, it's an opportunity for everyone to engage, whether by phone, whether in person. You can engage also via Zoom. The whole point is just engaging in the conversation. I think we have a pretty simple, pretty simple agenda today with a lot of items that are important to the city. We hope that you partake in the process and we look forward to your engagement. I'd like to kick off the morning by welcoming Pastor Richard Kowalski from St. Mark's Lutheran Church. He is the newly appointed pastor. Is he here with us? Pastor, please join us. Good morning. Good morning and Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Same to you too, thank you. The Lord be with you.
Also with you.
And let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for this beautiful day. A day that you awakened us and called us to do your work in the world through the many gifts that you have shared with each of us. Lord, I ask you to bless this meeting, bless each and everyone here as they go about the business of this city. We pray for your Holy Spirit's guidance, that the discussion that will be had and the decisions that will be made, that they might be a reflection of your will. Bless this time together. We pray this through your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor, thank you for being here with us.
Yes, absolutely, my pleasure.
We look forward to welcome you once again and send our best wishes to your congregation.
We'll do that, thank you.
God bless. Thank you, Pastor. Mr. DCM, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the first item of the day. Before I do that, I'd like to make sure that everyone is aware that item E5 has been deferred. So please make sure you, if anyone's here waiting for E5 or is on the phone, that will be held in the next commission meeting. Moving on to presentation and protocol documents, item A1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to call up school board member Maritza Rojas. Couple months ago, her mother passed away and she was an integral member of our Coral Gables community. One of the, probably one of the best conversations that I had when I first ran, I guess now nine years ago, was with your mother. We sat in her front porch there on Mendoza and we probably talked for a good 45 minutes about how proud she was of her daughters and about her vision for the city of Coral Gables and how she had been part of this community, how she loved the community that she lived in. And it was a loss for all of us the day that she passed away. So wanted to offer you an opportunity to say a few words before I read the resolution of condolence.
Thank you so very much. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all of our commissioners and especially to you, Commissioner Fernandez. This meant so much to my mother. She lived in the city beautiful almost her entire life and she was passionate about everything in Coral Gables. On behalf of our entire family, we thank you for this opportunity. My mom was an incredible woman, amazing. There are few people in the world that you meet that are like my mother. I know we all feel the same way about our moms, but mine was truly special. My mother came from Cuba, as many families did, trying to get away from communism and coming to the land of freedom. They left everything behind and had to start a new life. She did not speak the language and yet they prevailed. My mother, my father worked tirelessly so that my sister, my brother and I had the best opportunities we could get here in this country. Very briefly, I will tell you that she went through a very tragic loss. That was the loss of my brother. He went to school one day and never came back. I learned through my mom how when you have a tragedy, when your child is playing football in school and lightning hits, the whole team goes down and he's the only one. There was a reason. God chose him. My mother felt the worst loss any parent could feel. But the strong woman that she was, she turned that horrible negative situation in her life to a positive. So my mother devoted her life to children, children everywhere. Miami Children's Hospital, at that time it was Variety Children's Hospital, now it's Nicholas Children's Hospital. She and a group of friends raised so much money for children in the oncology department and hematology group. These were families that could not afford the services that were necessary. And yet she did that for many, many years together with a wonderful group of ladies and gentlemen in a group that she started where Kirk Menendez's mom and my mom served together. My mother initiated that group, Little Flower Church, and they were committed to helping their fellow men. But most importantly, my mother devoted her time helping other parents who lost their children. Whether it was an accident or an illness, it didn't matter. She was there for all of them and she was there for the entire family. As an educator, my sister and I had many, many events. Mom was there cheering us on every single time. And family was critical to her. In addition to that, she felt that she had to help not only kids here in this country and her family here, but also in other countries that were not as fortunate as we were. And she worked tirelessly, tirelessly to help start an orphanage in another country with a cousin who took over that responsibility. They started with one child and ended with hundreds of children in that arena. So with that, I know that we're very busy. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about a woman whose faith, whose unwavering love for her fellow man and most importantly, for God, touched so many lives and that was evident the day that we gave her final goodbye. The church had standing room only because so many people were touched by her. So I saw a little, I was going through some documents and I found something that I think described my mom to a T and I will conclude with that. It says, "Those who touch our lives, some people come and go in our lives like passing ships, nameless faces, or forgotten dreams. They cross our paths only briefly, never meant to be a part of our lives, but there are others, those kind-hearted spirits who come into the world and stay for a while or a lifetime. They touch our hearts and make a difference in our lives. They give us the gift of friendship so that we are not alone. They give us the gift of love. They give us so many other gifts so that we feel joy. They give us the gift of understanding so that we know peace. They support us, believe in us, and give us hope. They give all this freely. And know not that they give at all. We share with them simple, ordinary times in our lives, moments that become memories that stay in our hearts forever and we are never, ever the same." That was my mom and her legacy of selflessness and love for all those that she came in contact with will live on forever in their hearts. So I thank you all very, very much for this opportunity. I know she'd be smiling and I see a lot of first responders here. We come from a family of first responders and I know mom would be so happy to know that when this was given on her behalf, that all of you were here because she loved the firefighters, the police officers, and all first responders that she came into contact with. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and especially commissioners, but Commissioner Fernandez.
Do any of my colleagues have any comments?
No, I didn't, unfortunately I didn't have the opportunity to meet your mom, meet your mom. But the selflessness that you described, the love that she shared with everybody helped so many people. You know, I, it felt like I had the opportunity to meet her here today and clearly she shared that with you and instilled that spirit in you and which causes you to continue to serve and give back to the children throughout our county in such a huge, huge way. Appreciate everything you do, the teamwork that you instill for people to work together and the love that you share with everybody and I can see where you got it. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much.
This, this speech really, really honored your mom and I'm not even going to say anything else because I'll start to cry. But very nice, very, very nice.
I want to mention that I first met your mom, Rosa Malia, when I was coaching at the youth center. I was an assistant coach on the tackle football team between your boys and your nephews. She would be on the sideline in her chair with your dad and they weren't passive grandparents. They were wanting to call in plays, change personnel on the field. She was an extra coach. And I remember as assistant coach, you go, "Kirk, come over here." And she'd tell me basically what the head coach needed to do. So that was my first impression. Then after that, like you mentioned, the prayer group at Churchill Little Flower, Corazon de Jesús, and I saw your mom's leadership lead group of women decades after decades to reach out to people that needed help, moms that were widowed, people that had illnesses, leukemia, and they were there always. And I honestly believe based, listening to what you said, God took her pain, her faith and her love and created someone who had such an impact on the lives of so many for so many years. And sometimes we don't understand why things happen, but when you have faith and you have love, you see the, the fruits of that life and your mom gave so much. And I think your family and the community is blessed for having had her all these years.
Thank you.
Madam Representative, they mentioned, they talk a lot about, about your, your mother's accomplishments in the church and in the public realm. I'm going to take a different approach. From the few times that I had the pleasure of meeting her, she, she was most proud of your accomplishments. She was most, she was most impressed that her daughters became educators, people who devoted their life for not only educating but leading in the school board. That was something that again, left an indelible mark on this community. In turn, in turn, made her have an amount of pride that it would exude every time that you had a conversation with her. So one of the things that you can always hold on to, which is something that I hold on to every time I think about my grandparents, is just the, the amount of pride, the amount of just, you know, when they look at, when they look at the work that you've done, sister, your family, serving at all levels, from Congress all the way down, I don't say all the way down, but you know, to the local level. To her, that was the embodiment of her efforts being in this community. And I think that embodies what you mentioned in the beginning of your speech, when you talk about the Cuban struggle. My father, like I've told you before and we've had this conversation, Pedro Pang, these are individuals that came to this great country looking for freedom, for democracy, looking for an opportunity. And this country opened its arms and you made the most of that opportunity. And you were able to make the most of that opportunity because of her sacrifice, because of her struggle, because she put you and, and the other children first above her own interest. So that's what, that's what it is. That's who we are in this community. That's what the grandparents are, you know, at the end of the day. And that's a conversation that we've had, especially when you talk about Carlos's son who lived across the street from, who still lives across the street from my grandmother's old house, where my grandma lives around Minorca. But at the end of the day, she's very proud of you. And you know, when I talk about your grandmother, excuse me, about your mother, I apologize. I talk about my grandparents and I think that is what makes me proud.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
So a resolution of condolence on behalf of the Coral Gables City Commission extended its heartfelt sympathy to the bereaved family of Rosa Malia Hernandez de Portela. Whereas born on December 17th, 1930 in Havana, Cuba, Rosa Malia was destined to thrive. And whereas Rosa was both a scholar and an athlete, graduating from the prestigious Catholic Girls' School Las Dominicas Francescas, Francesas, on June 20, 1948. And whereas when Rosa met her beloved husband Julio Francisco Portela Agramonte, their connection was immediate as her first and only boyfriend Julio Francisco became her best friend and the love of her life. Together, they welcomed three children into the world, two daughters, Maria Teresa Lourdes, and a son Julio Cesar, who sadly passed away in an accident in 1975. And whereas in 1961, Rosa Amalia and her family left their beloved Cuba in search of freedom, finding a new home in the United States. Once settled in Miami, Florida, Rosa Amalia's spirit of commitment to service flourished in her new country, which she loved dearly. She began working at Variety Children's Hospital, now known as Nicholas Children's Hospital, where she served as a ward clerk in the intensive care unit. She founded and chaired a committee dedicated to raising funds to support Cuban and other children in need of medical treatment. And whereas Rosa Amalia's kindness, faith, and love for her family inspired those around her as they watched her dedicate her life to raising funds for the hematology and oncology division of what is now Nicholas Children's Hospital, feeding the poor and providing support to grieving parents. Her legacy of selfless service and compassion lives on in the hearts of those she touched. And whereas, following the tragic and ultimate, untimely death of her son Julio Cesar in 1975, Rosa Amalia founded the Spanish Catholic group Heart of Jesus Charismatic Group at the Church of the Little Flower in 1976. That group continues to operate today and has served as a space of support and faith for many. And where Rosa Amalia will be greatly missed, but always remembered for her beautiful smile, contagious positive energy, and boundless love for God and for everyone, especially children, along with her dedication to her family and community. May she rest in peace, reunited with her loving husband, son, and those who have gone before her, knowing that her spirit of service and kindness will continue to inspire future generations. Thank you very much, madam.
Moving on to item A2. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here with us, both of you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Solange Lopez, Marketing Manager for the Economic Development Department.
Matt Anderson, Assistant Director for Mobility and Sustainability.
So we are here to present the Clean Community Award to the city of Coral Gables on behalf of Keep Florida Beautiful. They presented this award at their annual conference this past November. Keep Coral Gables Beautiful nominated the Downtown Coral Gables for this award, which honors communities that maintain clean and green spaces that everyone can enjoy. The three main pillars for the reason that we received this award for the downtown has to do with our quarterly downtown community cleanups, the work that Block by Block does every day in the downtown, and our community beautification awards that we present to businesses on an annual basis. All of these programs highlight the hard work and dedication that volunteers do every day to maintain the cleanliness, greenery, and overall beauty of our city. The downtown community cleanups, in close partnership with the Coral Gables Chamber of Commerce, bring together a wide range of community members from local residents and businesses, all united in their commitment to preserving the beauty and cleanliness of the downtown area. It also includes a post-event mixture that's hosted by local restaurants and sponsored by Baptist Health South Florida. These events offer volunteers a chance to see the community in the downtown, help keep it clean, and especially for the business groups that come out, if their offices are in this area, it makes them feel like a bigger part of the community that they work in. Since this program began in September of 2021, Keep Coral Gables Beautiful and the Chamber have successfully organized 13 downtown community cleanups, engaging close to 500 volunteers, collecting close to 3,000 pounds of litter from our downtown, and making substantial impacts to the cleanliness and overall appeal. Matt is going to talk a little bit about the work that Block by Block does every day in the downtown as well.
So yeah, Block by Block has been an incredible contractor for the city, and I want to recognize Gene and his team. You guys have probably seen them out on Miracle Mile in Geraldo. Some of the most friendly staff that are always out there helping our residents, helping the visitors to our city, whether it's directing them, if they're looking for something in specific, or just out there cleaning and making sure that Miracle Mile and Geraldo are free of litter. Stickers that end up on signs, they are usually the quickest ones to respond when we send them those requests. And they've been doing an incredible job in the city since 2017. And, you know, they service over 65 litter cans just in that Miracle Mile in Geraldo. So, you know, if you guys see them out there, definitely greet them. They're doing an amazing job. I probably get at least one to two emails a week just complimenting them on their service to the city and how they represent our city and really ensure how we keep our city beautiful.
And finally, the commercial beautification awards that we give out annually, which is an ongoing effort to recognize those businesses that have made exceptional efforts in beautifying and maintaining their storefronts and areas. Together, all of these programs have significantly enhanced the cleanliness and beautification of Coral Gables downtown, creating a thriving and welcoming environment. They encourage residents, visitors, and businesses alike to actively participate in maintaining a litter-free and beautiful city downtown. I also want to ask Zach Evangelist, who is the Vice Chairman of Business and Economic Development on the Board for the Chamber. He's here representing the Chamber for this award as well. And one thing I will say is this beautiful award that was given to us by Keep Florida Beautiful, it's fully made out of recycled materials. They always engage with a local artist every year for their awards, so every year is different. This award is made from upcycled wood, recycled foil balloons, and styrofoam. And it is a yellowfin tuna representing the ecosystem of the South Florida in its entirety. We're also very proud of the fact that the 2025 Annual Conference will be held here in Coral Gables next November.
Come to the podium, please.
Is this the first time we get this award?
Yes, so this is a relatively new category in the awards that they give annually. I believe we are the second or third community to win it.
Yeah, so Mark Trowbridge, President of the Chamber, who you guys are all familiar with, was unable to attend. He was, he's on his way back from Mexico City with his nephew's 40th birthday festivities. But he and the Chamber staff have been working very, very hard in all of these initiatives and very much focused on the application. And I know it opens us up, the city and the community, to prospects of much larger award. Hopefully, in the next couple of years, will be something at a higher, not higher, as the mayor said, but a upper level of government in a few years. So Mark and his team are very proud of this, and he's been talking about this for years. So we're glad we were able to make it happen. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Great work as always, incredible work. You want to say something, Matt?
Oh, I was just saying, can we take a picture?
Of course, yeah. I just wanted to congratulate you because, again, you're doing a great job as always, doing a great job. Never cease to surprise. Let's take a picture.
It's an honest ask.
We got the tail, we got the tail? Moving on to item A3. Asking the fire chief to please join us for item A3.
Good morning, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I'm happy to introduce to you our firefighter of the month for the month of October. Captain Greg Atwood took on the challenge of organizing and taking a great initiative towards health and safety of our firefighters, in which he organized from the beginning all the way toward the end our firefighter annual physicals, looking for a location, meeting with the vendor, and then organizing all the appointments. Administratively, that sounds like a feat that's completed every day. However, when you introduce firefighters into the mix, it's the equivalent of herding cats to get this done. So for his commitment to take this challenge on and for his commitment to our health and safety, he's our firefighter of the month for the month of October, Captain Greg Atwood.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I just want to say thank you, want to say, you know, thank everybody I work with. My, oh, sorry, I want to thank everybody, the chiefs and the administration for putting their faith in me and their trust in me to make this happen and get this done. And just glad I could help keep everybody safe, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's take a photo.
Yeah, exactly. No, that's not, you know, they're unique in their own.
Moving on to item A4. Chief, welcome back.
Good, welcome back, Mr. Mayor. Nice to be back. I'd like to introduce Captain Durham as our firefighter of the month for the month of November. To talk to you about him, I'd have his director supervisor, Division Chief Jones, speak on his behalf.
Good morning, everybody. I'm excited this morning to celebrate and honor our firefighter of the month, probably, in my opinion, one of the most hardest-working individuals in the fire department, Captain Kyle Durham. But I'd like to make special mention today for why he's being nominated for firefighter of the month, and that is because the city made an investment of $2 million into our new computer-aided dispatch system. And as a result, he was one of the individuals that worked in collaboration with the Police Department, Communications, as well as the Information Technology Department, and making sure that that software was properly put in place. So because of his hard work and dedication, ensuring that everything was done properly, that system called Mark 43 is now up and running. So we want to congratulate Captain Kyle Durham for firefighter of the month for the month of November.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. When Chief De La Rosa told me that at the beginning of the year I'd be moving from an on-duty rescue lieutenant to a staff position, I was a little unsure. But then I realized quickly my mindset was going to have to change, and I wanted to dedicate my time and my effort to helping my fellow firefighters make decisions quickly in the field when seconds matter through enhancements in technology and in EMS. I realized that Mark 43 computer dispatch system was going to be the key. It took over a year of pre-planning, and then we went live June 25, and that's when the real work began. And my beautiful wife and my mother are here, of course. And they would gladly tell you that I would love to take all this credit to myself, but I cannot. There's a tremendous team behind it. And Major Lemon from PD and Bruzos from PD and Amy Diaz from Communications have been a big key in making this happen. And of course, Chief De La Rosa and Chief Gil Hernandez for giving me this opportunity and this chance to succeed. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
I would love to take a picture with you guys. Sorry.
Moving on to item A5. Chief, good morning.
Morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I'd like to bring forward Sergeant Brad Bana from the Detective Division. For the detective of the third quarter for 2024, the nomination was for Sergeant Brad Bana. This is for his outstanding work evidenced below. Sergeant Bana exemplifies the leadership, not only by leading by example, but also actively leading from the front as the Property Crimes Unit Supervisor. His hands-on approach in handling investigations demonstrates his commitment to justice and is dedicated to his role. He's deeply involved in each case, providing guidance and support throughout to ensure the effective investigations are completed. Because of his expertise, and the memo goes on to about six pages of what he's worked on and what his team has worked on. on and what his team has worked on, he was nominated by his lieutenant Louis Lance and awarded by the selection committee as the detective of the third quarter for the criminal investigations division. Thing he's probably not going to tell you that I will is that effective January 16th, he's being promoted to lieutenant and will return to the uniform patrol division.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, commission. Thank you, Chief Hudak. Thank you, Major Athely and Lieutenant Lance for your leadership and for the nomination. And thank you to the award selection committee. Leadership is not simply about giving orders or holding a title. It's about embodying the values, work ethic, and vision you want to inspire in others. Leading from the front means being present, engaged, and willing to roll up your sleeves to do the work alongside your team. It's about setting standards and modeling the behavior you expect from others. When people see their leader striving, learning, and growing, they feel motivated to follow suit. Leadership from the front demonstrates courage and commitment, fostering trust and respect, which are the cornerstones of successful, of any successful team. It's a powerful reminder that actions speak louder than words. As the sergeant in the Coral Gables Police Department Crimes, Property Crimes Unit, I have the privilege of leading an incredible team that embodies these principles every day. I couldn't be prouder of their dedication, resilience, and hard work in protecting our community. Their ability to tackle challenges with integrity and focus inspires me and everyone they serve. It is their effort and excellence that make Coral Gables a safer place, and I'm honored to stand alongside them. Together, we exemplify the power of leading from the front, not just as individuals, but as a united team striving toward a shared purpose. Thank you.
So, Mr. Detective, first off, I want to congratulate you and your family for your hard work and on your promotion, a well-deserved promotion. I know you've been waiting for some time. I think you've been on the, on the force for 20 years, you said? About 20?
Twenty, it's my 23rd.
And it's, it's well deserved when you see somebody who's been so dedicated to the city of Coral Gables get that much deserved promotion. I see you all the time, you know, I've seen you on the streets, I've seen you working hard. You and I don't have much of a relationship. We only just exchange, you know, pleasantries. But I've always, I've always been impressed by the level of professionalism and the way that you conduct yourself and how serious you take this job. This is not just a business or a job for you, this is a calling, and you make it very evident in the small time that you and I have exchanged maybe just a handful of words. So I want to congratulate you, and it brings me a lot of pride to see you here today, and the words that the chief said in regards to you receiving the promotion. Were you aware of the promotion?
Uh, yes, I was.
Good. All right, I thought it was a surprise, that's why I was just asking.
Thank you, sir.
That's a beautiful thing. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Take a photo. So, for the first time in a long time, I'm going to take an item timed certain at 9:45, and we're going to be 30 seconds early. It's a bad joke, but I think it's a...
It's a good thing.
I want to take, I want to try to get as things, as many things done as possible at a time certain. So briefly, the item is F5. We have another timed certain item at 10:00 AM. I want to take a point of privilege to give you a quick recap of why I put this on the agenda. So I had this young man who happens to go to my alma mater, reach out to me, and I think it takes a lot of courage to reach out to somebody on a cold call and say, I want to meet with you. I want to meet with, I want to sit down with you, I want to have a conversation with you about an opportunity, about a two-pronged project that I'm working on, that I think is critically important when you talk about South Florida, when you talk about what makes our city and our community so special. It's our water, it's our waterways, it's being in the water, it's enjoying it in one form or another. If it's spearfishing, it's fishing, if it's, you know, aquatic sports, whatever it may be, just sitting on the beach, at the end of the day, boater safety and water safety is critical, and I think it's sometimes, many times overlooked. This young man who is here with us, he goes to Gulliver, he reached out to me, he asked to meet with me and sit down with me, and we had a great conversation over a few hours on Thanksgiving morning. He talked to me about a few things that I want you to hear about because I think it's important that the commission as a whole, along with the police and firefighters who are here today, and other members of the community who maybe are not so focused on water safety, especially boater, boating safety, get an opportunity to meet this young man and engage in a real conversation. I've also asked a dear friend of ours named Rodney Barretto, who not only lives in the city beautiful, but also has his offices here for many decades, who for well over a decade has served on the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and he was appointed by Governor Ron DeSantis on July 19, 2019, and reappointed in March 8, 2024. His term ends on the, in January 5, 2029, and was currently elected by his fellow commissioners to be the chairman of the commission. This is an incredibly important organization for the state of Florida, especially when you talk about tax revenue, and you talk about protection of our sensitive lands, and what makes Miami-Dade County and the state of Florida so important. So we brought these two individuals together in an effort to hopefully collaborate amongst many, so we can deliver on something that, again, has a little bit more teeth to bring safety on the water. We've heard so much over the last few years of the tragic incidents that have occurred in our waterways here, and this is the reason why William Bayline reached out to me in an effort to reach out to the commission, in an effort to reach out to the city and this, the greater community, to truly deliver on change. So I'd like to see if I can get Mr. William Bayline to come up here, along with Chairman Rodney Barretto to also join us, so we can talk about a few things that we're doing in this community, and hopefully collaborate on finding solutions to reduce the risk and the injuries that are occurring in our community. Sir, good morning.
Good morning.
Looking sharp as the day that I met you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and city of Coral Gables officials, my name is William Bayline. My address is 7524 Southwest 54th Court in Miami-Dade County. I'm very pleased to be here before you today, and I really appreciate the mayor's and hopefully the full commission's support of the watercraft and boater slash recreational watercraft user life safety initiatives that I am here to speak with you today. This issue started as a school assignment and quickly became more to me. I'm currently an eighth grade student at Gulliver Prep in the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program. As a part of the curriculum, we are tasked as students to form small groups, the goal of which is to create something beneficial to our community. I have with me today some raw materials that my group is working on combining, refining, and designing with input of the community and the commission. Similar to scuba divers, the goal here is to avoid future accidents and/or unfortunate events that have taken place in our community over the years. If we can avoid one future accident, we've achieved victory. Our community has been devastated too many times by recently by watercraft misuse and recreational watercraft deaths that have needlessly taken bright young people from our community. The time has come to change the conversation here and proactively address these terrible events. It is our collective job to make the waterways safe, residents, elected officials, and everyone in between. As a part of a comprehensive and thoughtful legislative effort to improve boater and watercraft user safety throughout Florida, there needs to be a large-scale planning discussion to implement significant financial increases in watercraft related violations and/or incident penalties, establishment of boater slash user license slash licensure requirements, and creation of a uniform safety system whereby watercraft users, i.e. water skiers and wakeboarders, are required to wear a visible device when in the water that can be deployed as needed to identify themselves to further ensure their safety in the water. To begin, implementing significant increases in watercraft-related violations and incident penalties are necessary. For example, speeding fines for boats need to be increased. The first fine one received when speeding is $250. This may seem like a large sum of money, but for people operating these large and expensive boats, it is not a big deal. The average sailboat in Florida costs around $3,000 to buy and run annually. Much larger boats, and especially the ones that are getting fined, cost much more. Increasing the fine to around 1,000 per incident regardless of boat size is needed. These fines can be enforced very similarly to school zones in the Pine Crest and Coral Gables area. School zones utilize cameras that track the speed of each car. If a car is going too fast, a fine is automatically issued. We can deploy more buoys and equip them with cameras to do the same exact thing. Just copy the school's model on the water. It's a no-brainer. As for licensure and insurance requirements of boaters and watercraft users, there are currently no licensure slash operational or insurance requirements to own or operate a watercraft if you were born before 1988. This leaves no restrictions at this time for people aged 36 and above. Around 75% of all boating accidents and fatalities are caused by people without a boating education or people born before 1988. We must find a way to establish statewide regulations that allow individuals to operate a watercraft. I ask Coral Gables to join me in the adoption of such regulations. A test similar to the Florida driver's test, a test requiring the operator to demonstrate their ability to not only operate the vehicle, but also do so safely should be required. My sister just turned 16 and got her license this past week. In watching her complete the requirements, it occurred to me that many of the parts of obtaining a learner's permit would be applicable and similarly effective in ensuring that those operating a watercraft are educated to safely do so. For example, in order to receive a learner's permit to drive a car, you must take a drug and alcohol course and then pass a written test. In order to receive a license, you must also have at least 50 hours of experience operating a car accompanied by a licensed driver. Therefore, passing a drug and alcohol test, a written test, a practical test that includes one's ability to park and/or navigate through channels, having the necessary safety equipment onboard, and navigate safely away from obstacles is critical. In addition, as part of creating a licensure and regulatory environment, we need to protect recreational watercrafts/wakeboarders who are not currently protected. It kind of goes without saying, but if there were watercraft operator or recreational user requirements, perhaps the devastating loss of young lives between the Fernandez and Adler families over the last couple of years could have been avoided. As a possible solution, by way of example, scuba divers often use a red flag to identify themselves when they are actively diving. I strongly suggest that our proposed life vest be legislatively read, approved, and required in some form to protect recreational watercrafts/wakeboarders/water skiers such that the ultimate design will function so that when they fall down or in other similar situations, it allows users to pull up a flag to identify themselves. Other elements of this life vest may be a whistle and/or a flashing light to alert other people where you are. Is an item being developed and needs further community and legislative input, we look forward to your ideas that from impacted families and the community at a large. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners for your time, and thank you in advance for your support of these legislative initiatives. I'm happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I could.
Of course.
I'm very happy you're here, okay, because I think there's a lot that you can contribute to some legislation that's currently pending before the Florida Legislature at this time. There's been a bill filed, SB 58, that touches upon some aspects of boating safety, and particularly those who are driving drunk and, and are boating drunk and cause harm to other, other folks. I think we can do more, like you, you indicated. This is a great opportunity while the legislature is addressing this. Take a look at that bill, and if you have time this week to meet with me, I can go through the bill with you and we can redline it, and perhaps get, you know, get this over to the senator to provide an amendment or an addendum to the bill and include these provisions. And Mr. Barretto, if you'd like to join us, I'd appreciate that, too. I do have availability on Friday. I don't know if that meets with your schedule.
I'm open to Friday.
Huh?
I'm more than happy to meet with you on Friday.
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you. I, I'm just really excited about what you're doing, and they're great ideas. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Can we take a photo?
Not yet, not yet. Slow down. You had, you had, you were on point on every single issue, and unless my colleagues have anything else they'd like to add.
Just, I want to congratulate you for taking the initiative to approach the mayor and bring this to our attention. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the city of Coral Gables has the largest coastline in South Florida. So this specifically affects Coral Gables and our residents. I used to own a boat, didn't use it much, but when I did, what surprised me that was I was able to get on the boat and use it, and I didn't have to have any license, I really didn't need to know what the laws were, the rules were. You were just allowed to go out there and use the boat, and a lot of times you're putting yourself in danger. In the Florida Keys, one of the most concerning factors was sometimes you would find a place to park, you know, or just, you know, hang out with your family off to the side, and the number of boats that would fly by you without even any concern for, for who was there and what they were doing was incredible. And you mentioned kayakers, I think, was another thing. As you passed John Pennycamp, the number of kayakers that are there in the water, and you have boats that are flying right by them and just pushing them off, some people were paddle boarding and they would just fall into the water. So I applaud these efforts, and I'm glad that Mr. Barretto is here, and hopefully the Fish and Wildlife Commission can, can do something to adopt some of these issues. You have my support in any way that I can, I can give it. Thank you for what you're doing, and I congratulate you. Eighth grade, I know you have many things on your mind right now, but taking this initiative is really commendable, and I commend your parents for raising such a great young man.
Thank you.
I just want to add, as an eighth grader, often this is a problem created by adults, but unfortunately, the youth are often the ones that pay the price with their life or permanent injuries. And it's amazing and beautiful that it's a young man just like yourself that steps up to the plate and takes, and a problem created by adults head-on, not only for yourself, but for all the young people that you represent. So congratulations, and we're here for support.
Thank you.
So besides being here for support, I've already scheduled appointments with you for multiple state representatives and the speaker, along with senators, to make sure that your voice and the idea that you brought forward is your idea that you move forward with, and you, and you address it, and you bring it forward, and you take ownership of it, because like I said before in the beginning, it takes an immense amount of leadership, especially in eighth grade, to come here and a commission and explain your idea, your idea which a lot of people are talking about, and a lot of people are thinking about, but few people have wanted to take that step forward to really find a solution for it. And I want to commend you on that. I'd like to have Mr. Barretto please join us, because he's one of the partners that we're going to be tapping into in regards to the state and the Senate to push this agenda forward, which you're going to be leading, leading the way, but Mr. Barretto's going to be hopefully blocking, blocking and tackling and helping us get to the finish line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. I'm excited to be here this morning to support Mr. William Bayline. He approached me at Riviera Country Club, and he saw me there, and he, he said, hey, I understand you run the Fish and Wildlife Commission, I want to get your support, I got this whole idea that I'm working on, and I, I was able to put him together with some of our Fish and Wildlife folks that gave him all the background that he put together. I got to tell you, for a 13-year-old... I got to tell you, for a 13-year-old, he's way ahead of his time. I congratulate him, his parents, for raising a great kid. And by the way, he's a scratch golfer. You don't want to play him in golf, or you're going to lose your money. It's, you know, time is everything in life, and I keep telling everybody, and you all know because we all live here, we've had some very high-propile deaths in our community with boating accidents. I mean, literally, last week, not as high-propile, but we lost two people two weekends ago with two different boat-related accidents. Today, I have with me Roger Young. Roger, stand up. Roger's our former Colonel of Law Enforcement, but he's actually our Executive Director who runs Fish and Wildlife. Went to Killian High School. I have Major Mazda with us, went to Columbus High School. Major Lieutenant Colonel, by the way, this is the first Lieutenant Colonel ever out of Tallahassee that I advocated that we have here in Miami-Dade County. Alfredo Escano, who a lot of people know, went to Miami Springs High School. So we have all this good knowledge here. We have several Majors here, that Major Holcomb as well, who heads up our waterway and boater safety. We're having a meeting today. Reason they're all here is we're meeting with Kathy Fernandez-Rundle today to talk about boater safety, talk about the laws that are being presented. There's a lot of communication, you know? When you present these laws to strengthen boater safety, believe it or not, the boat industry, if they don't embrace it, they fight you. Their job is to sell boats, okay? And our job is to protect the people on the waterway. And things do have to change. And I've, in fact, the last death, literally two weeks ago, I called some of the major boat manufacturers and said, "You think it's time that we have a driver's license, a license for a boat?" You know, and I'm not sure we're there yet, but there's a lot of things we can do to change and strengthen it. What Williams presented is something that's brilliant, that's something that we should look at and take it seriously. I'd like for Roger to come up and say a few words, but this is at the forefront of the Fish and Wildlife Agency right now, and this is going to be the session that deals with boater safety. We see it coming, we feel it, we've been talking to a lot of people. With that, Roger Young.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, for having us opportunity, and I'd like to thank Mr. Bayline, too, for his, you know, like the chairman said, wise beyond his years and his passion for boating safety, and it kind of brings me home here back to Dade County where I grew up. And our waterways are what make our community special, what make our state so special. And as the Executive Director of the Fish and Wildlife, I can assure you that we stand at the ready to do what we can to work with our state legislators, our Senate President, Speaker of the House, to work with them to ensure that we're doing all we can to keep our waterways as safe as possible, and we will do that this coming session. And with the insight from our next generation coming up as well, we'll certainly take all this into consideration and do all we can to make our waterways safe. So we appreciate the time and the recognition. We look forward to working with Mr. Bayline moving forward, and it's just a pleasure and privilege to be here and want to say thank you for the time and the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we take that photo, I just wanted to leave you with one point that I had mentioned to Mr. Bayline when I met with him, and one of the conversations I had with Rodney is that we talk about the tragic incidents, and those are the ones that make the headlines. I'm on the waterways every month, God willing, as often as I can be, whether it's fishing or spearfishing or just snorkeling with my daughters. Let me tell you, we don't talk about the almost accidents that happen, which are pervasive every day, everywhere. I've been in the water on a reef with a flag out and had a boat just come right over me, and it's happened more than a handful of times. And that happens on a daily basis here. So what you're doing, what you're doing is moving the ball forward. And to me, to me, it's critically important because we never talk about the lives that we saved, we always talk about the lives that lost so tragically here in this community. So I want to commend you, look forward, along with this commission, to working with Mr. Barretto and our state leaders to really put some teeth into the fines like you mentioned. I think it's time, fully in favor of having a license if you're going to be operating a boat. Again, that's my opinion. I think it's something that is critically important. I think it's a positive step forward. You can never have enough safety measures, and we don't have enough resources on the water. Another thing that we need at the state and at the local level is to provide more law enforcement in the waterways. The moment that you hit somebody with a serious, with a serious fine, just like what happens when you catch somebody speeding, for example, in a school zone, and the tickets are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars, you know, people are a lot more thoughtful and a lot more careful when they enter one of those school zones next time that there's an opportunity. So, Mr. Bayline, thank you for your hard work. Congratulations on your efforts. I want to congratulate your family who's here, your grandmother, your mother and father who are here. Again, they're a testament to who you are and who you're going to be. And thank you to Mr. Barretto for taking time out of your busy schedule and offering some mentorship for this young gentleman.
Well, thank you for giving him the platform.
It's a privilege.
Coral Gables.
Now let's take that photo.
Thank you.
I'd like for the family to come up.
Moving on to the approval of minutes, we have none. Public comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First speaker this morning, Mrs. Maria Cruz.
Mayor. Mayor. Good morning.
Maria, give me one second. Mayor, if you can indulge me for one second. I asked the chief, when we were doing all the presentations, to bring down an award that the police department won in the pig roast. And I know it's here, but maybe after public comment, he could come and say, say a word.
Which award?
Ham. Pig roast.
So with all the respect in the world to our fire department, who has a wonderful kitchen set up in all four of their, or soon-to-be four stations, I didn't, and I appreciate the Commissioner bringing this forward, the one thing that police officers do individually is fight crime, deter crime, staff for those appropriate crimes to make sure it doesn't happen. But the one thing they do in their spare time is they know how to cook. And when it comes to roasting pigs, I am very proud to announce that your police department came out number one of all of the police departments in Dade County at the recent pig roast. As you can see, this, we had a hard time finding where we could put this, so it's upstairs in the conference room. But it was a group effort along with one of our resident businesses. So for the first place for the taste, is that what it was? For the taste of the best tasting law enforcement pig roast held at Tropical Park annually, the Coral Gables Police Department came in first place. So because some of the chefs are here. And we really want to thank our partners that have helped us and support from our communities. So we do house calls, too. If you want to do a cajatini in your backyard, we'll show up and do that as well.
Have you shown Raimundo the award?
Raimundo?
Yeah. Competition.
We're going to, we're getting challenged by IT already, so.
Could we take a quick picture with the award?
Sure. I think they should, gentlemen, with the award.
Before we move on to, we continue again back to public comment, I'd like to, I'd like to recognize Mayor Thompson, who is here with us. Thank you for joining us, Mayor. And I'd also like to recognize that I forgot one item that will be deferred. It's item E1, so it's E5, and E1 will also be deferred. Mr. Clerk.
First speaker for public comments, Mr. Mayor is Mrs. Maria Cruz.
Mrs. Maria Cruz, 1447 Miller Road. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. It's not a happy day for me, but I have something to say. Last election, when incumbents supported candidates running for office, all the bullying didn't work, and they lost. Things clearly changed from that point on. Now, the bullying and intimidation for everyone, residents, employees, anybody, has become a practice. Earlier this year, when my husband passed away, and my family was concerned about my well-being, Mayor, are you going to listen or should I stop?
You have my full attention, but I have to also read these documents to be sure.
Well, I'm sorry. I think you need to pay, respect me as you didn't respect the previous one, that you were busy while he was talking.
I am respecting. You can please move forward.
I will not unless you're paying attention.
I am paying attention. So please move forward, Maria. Please move forward. Mr. Clerk, next person on the roll.
She still has two minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, but I mean, I'm, again, I'm here, and we're here listening to you. I have to read this email that was just handed to me by the clerk. I have no choice.
Okay, let it be known that the mayor has been looking at his phone and reading stuff while people have been talking. Like I said, my, my family was concerned about my well-being. I requested a police watch order. Why did I do that? Because I became aware that our mayor had been saying publicly that he was going to destroy anybody who didn't agree with him. Anybody who didn't agree with him. Well, Maria Cruz was one of those. I had to go through a whole ball of bullying from his cronies. I had to hear his friends say that I had a police detail assigned to me. The attacks began. I was accused of taking advantage of police resources. And even when the mayor wanted to request information about my watch order, and he uses alter ego, Albert Giancarlo, to request it, the police department released my watch order information. That became public, and that was published all over the place, and it was used again to attack me for having the guts, I guess, to go against the mayor's wishes. Employees as strong as the police chief came into play. I know that both the mayor and the police chief are going to deny it. Of course, they're going to deny it. But guess what? After many years of having the same NSA in our zone, he was rotated like everybody else. Yes, he was rotated. Isn't it, isn't it interesting? Isn't it a nice coincidence that now during the holidays, when the criminals come out because they know that we're busy with holiday issues, when the criminals come out because we're going to have lots of packages delivered, is when we change the NSAs? Why? Because we don't want the NSA's that know us, that could be taking care of a lady that lives by herself and is afraid because who knows what could happen? We do not want that to happen. Let's take this opportunity now to discuss the abuse of power that a mayor, who is not a strong mayor, takes his power to tell employees, the police chief, the court enforcement people, and if you have been visited by court enforcement or public works lately, please contact me, and I will tell you if your address is on the list of the concerns. Maybe it's time to ask the mayor and the chief to stop lying. And by the way, I did get the emails today, today, right before this meeting, that specifically says the change was going to start December 2nd, not after the holidays like it was requested. Enough is enough. The mayor wants his way of the highway and found a way to get back at me. Sad day in the city of Coral Gables.
Mr. Clerk.
Jackson Rip Holmes.
Good morning, sir.
So I got lucky because I have good news to report. Do we have the video ready to go, do you suppose?
I can try sharing your video.
Okay, while you're doing that, I'm going to give a quick intro. Many of you know that I've been working on trying to keep us from drowning due to sea level rise. And I have friends who have been working on free energy experiments, which I propose that we do one in, with water from Biscayne Bay to see if it works. I've gotten lucky because a close friend of mine has done this video where, check this out, this is, I ask you, have you ever seen anything like this in your life? They melt steel at room temperature. We think, you know, what I'm talking about is an hallucination, it's impossible, it's this or that, but you're going to see in this video that they, that a friend of mine melts steel at room temperature. Are we ready?
Yes, sir. So if cable TV could please share my screen.
Okay, so the question is, John, if you're in the chat, are they coating that with Bakelite? Because it doesn't look like they're mixing together. So it's not a homogeneous one, but it's like, similar to like handles, so that's probably, that's what it's saying. So we will see. So basically, this is steel. All right, so let's play this, and the key part is, it's 200x speed. So I made it 200x speed, I didn't just find it like this. Let's play this right here.
Try sharing it one more time.
Mixing together. So it's not a homogeneous one, but it's like, similar to like handles, so that's probably, that's what it's saying. So we will see. So basically, this is steel. All right, so let's play this, and the key part is, it's 200x speed. So I made it 200x speed, I didn't just find it like this. Let's play this right here.
Okay, it's at the top, you just push up. Yeah, that's right. Maybe that'll work. I don't know, it's just a dead camera.
So John says, yeah, so it's steel and with a coating around it that's plastic. Okay, now I made it 200x speed. So think about it, every second is almost three minutes. So two, yeah, so 60 times three, I know, it is more than three minutes. So every second is more than three minutes. It's almost four minutes. Yeah, so part of something, okay, so interesting. Let's play it here. So this is literally, most of it's steel, just melting. Steel melting, and again, look at it, it's every second, think of every second. Steel melting. And again, look at it. It's every second, think of every second is, is four minutes almost. Yeah, so it's literally melting. This is never before seen footage. If you've seen it, anyone in there has seen it. Is that Dr. Ludwig talking? Or, yeah, it could be. I, I think it, yeah, it might be. I'll, I'll play. Okay, so that's this one here. And I'll, I'll show you where I got it from. So that's the trailer. And that one, I put links to them as well in the.
That's it, sir.
Okay, so we're back. The next step, what, what we need to do, you know, we're, we're all under threat. Coral Gables could be underwater in 150 years and exist no more with rising sea levels. We don't want to become the lost city of Atlantis. The next step that we need to do now that I have proof that these seemingly impossible technologies exist, my friend, my friend who could come here if we had to, if I had the money to pay him and talk to you, has melted steel at room temperature. The next step is to convince the University of Miami to help with a fairly easy experiment on heavy seawater and just run a, a quick electrical thing through it. The, the theory is, and I'll just finish this now. If, if we get seawater that contains deuterium, it's, it's findable in Biscayne Bay or close by, and run a current from one end of a, of a lab tube to the other, think of a bottle, right? We should get, or we'll find out, we get, we should get more electricity coming out than we put in. Right? This is, is an experiment which has been done about 100 times successfully. That's our next step to convince the University of Miami to help us do that experiment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, next speaker is on Zoom. It's Mr. David Renshaw.
Mr. Renshaw, good morning.
Good morning, David Renshaw. Yes, thank you. Just wanted to say real quick, just a complimentary to the city manager of moving the current meetings outside of the city hall to where we're at now as taking care of the staff, the employees and everybody there. Just wanted to go on record that received some good complementaries from the folks, membership there, and appreciate the efforts of keeping everybody there. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda.
Before the vote adopting the consent agenda is taken, is there anyone who wishes additional discussion or review of any item on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to request D5.
D5 to be pulled, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Any additional items?
Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. In reference to item D5, I just want to take a moment of privilege to thank Marlon Ever, who's here with us, along with Sally Jude, who's no longer with us, who were instrumental in pushing this item forward, along with the vice mayor, and also members who are no longer on the commission, because this item, this item was accomplished via resolution in January of 2023. And I asked a clerk for the background information. And it's important to also acknowledge that we had, we had, excuse my eyesight, I apologize. We had Menendez, Anderson, Lago, Mena, Kason, who was here at that point filling in for George Force. So it was a 5-0 vote and I wanted to thank, I don't know if Marlon Ever wanted to come up and say a few words, because again, the villagers, you know, played a role and I think it's important. It's something that we talked about, that maybe we can do it in the front end, but we'll be able to do it in the back end, to send a strong message that again, this is important to the community. And it's something where as a person who has solar on their house, along with the vice mayor, there's a lot of benefits to it, but it also sends a message to the community that, you know, this is viable and it's an opportunity to make a small, you know, every, every small pebble eventually may deliver in something big, so. Ms. Everett, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. Sally Jude died on Christmas Eve of 2022. And she was just a wonderful, she had wonderful spirit. Her two main loves were preservation and sustainability. And she had solar panels on her 1923 house in the, the French Normandy Village. Anyway, she approached me one day and she said, I want to give the villagers, I want to give the villagers a check for $20,000 and I want that to be in the form of a grant that will tie sustainability and preservation together. So that was my job. Many of you have heard me talk about this for the last few years. And I'm delighted to say that the grant has been awarded by the villagers to the city of Coral Gables. They have two years to make it happen. And what we decided was to, the, the little building on the Granada Golf Course was built in the 60s, so it, it qualifies as a historic structure. It's on the oldest nine-hole golf course in the city, in the state of Florida. And it's within the Greenways, so it's a historic neighborhood. And we're going to put solar panels on that building. So the villagers are delighted. I'm glad that the city's delighted. I think we might have to convince historic, but I'll work on that next. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Marlon, as always. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Castro?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Now moving on to item E4, which is time certain for 10 a.m. And like I mentioned, thank you for Mayor Thompson being here with us, along with Felix Pardo from the Planning and Zoning Board and other esteemed members of the community who are here in regards to this issue. Madam Vice Mayor, do you mind running the meeting just for a few minutes? One second, I have to step out to go to the bathroom. Thank you.
Certainly.
Vice Mayor, if you will allow me to read the item into the record?
Absolutely.
Madam Vice Mayor, can we just take two minutes? Use the restroom? That way everybody can start fresh?
Yeah. Anybody else need to use the restroom? It's a good time to do it.
All right.